I'm here.
Excellent, alright.
Are you ready for roll call?
Alright, it's our air moment. Yep, calling order the committee to hold meeting for August twentieth, two thousand twenty four. We have roll call.
Wright.
Here.
Eddie.
Here.
Malco.
Here.
Locke.
Here.
Sima.
Here.
Babcock.
Here.
Number one is approval of the minutes from the committee to hold meeting for August seventh, two thousand twenty four. Have a motion to approve.
So.
Second.
Second, any changes, corrections? Okay, roll call.
Malco.
Yes.
Locke.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Sima.
Yes.
Eddie.
Yes.
All events are approved. Uh, next item is public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight? Will be another opportunity after the end of meeting, but seeing right at this point, we'll move on to uh, old business, which is discussion, uh, a recommendation of entering into agreement with place foundry design. Uh, to provide designing orders representative services for the construction of the village's main street business incubator project. So this is, uh, the design proposal for the Hottest Run property, Hottest Run and Main Street property for our incubator projects. Um, we've had the, the public meetings, we had the, the initial concept designs come through the board. We'll have another meeting next, uh, point seven, which next Tuesday. Uh, we will have a, uh, kind of sort of portal being of that presenting that final concept of this uh, project, but this is the actual design, the sub工程, the actual architecture designs, the actual ready to bid out, uh, finding portion of this. Um, so questions about that? Um, feel free to ask that, otherwise, uh, they're motion to send that to a board for approval.
Like to make the motion, we send it to the board as a first reading.
Okay.
Second.
Over motion second to send this to the board, uh, for a first reading, so then we require either a waiver of the first read or, uh, layover that dates. Um, any discussions or questions?
Wait, uh, how does that work with your timing of, uh, getting the necessary things planned? So that pads can go in, et cetera.
We can still suspend the rules. I just would like to see it go as a first reading, just so we have that formal meeting with the actual public next week. And then we make that final decision with the board meeting still.
First to final.
Right. Cause you can still suspend the rules at that point. It's I feel more comfortable that way. Doesn't make it feel like it's a done deal. Right, for Republican.
Any questions or comments?
Well, I, you know, if it doesn't delay, I, I just think that, you know, it's sort of critical that we get this, the plans isn't out there, they're, they're
but yeah, all we have to do is vote to suspend the rules, not a big deal.
Oh.
And it still happened.
Yeah, it might change your meeting.
What had been tentatively planned is that by October, there would be five concrete pads installed because the high school is going to be constructing those items beginning next week. And just as long as we can keep moving on this so that we can get it out to bid, so that we can get those in place by October, otherwise it's just up the timing of everything.
Good discussion.
Will that happen, Joel?
Um, it should, yeah, we want, yeah, we want to keep it moving, um, wanting to improve it at the next meeting. Uh, and speaking of place foundry, they will be doing that site work and the, the planning for those pads initially. Um, get those, those parts in, they're going to start segmenting that out, issues with that. And then they'll continue to work on the whole design for the whole project. So it should be, that should be not a problem, um, to continue.
The idea behind the first reading thing is just, so the public has transparency that this is not a done deal. Feel that way, it's more of a, at the next meeting, we have the choice to suspend the rules and make it a done deal. Or not depending on their feedback next Tuesday. See, we noticed on our website that this will be the case of that meeting, otherwise they show up. Yeah, okay.
Question. Alright, if you remember the discussion, um, have a roll call, this is the vote to send this to the board as a first read.
Locke.
Yes.
Malco.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Sima.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, item number three is just update discussion of Ridge Street parking multi-use project. You got in your, you know. We have a tune in a second. So those will, we got those, um, that projects moving forward. Um, we have the final, uh, plan to be coming forward, uh, shortly. Um, our intention is to have them either at the next, possibly at next week or if you know, at the very latest, we'll have them at the board meeting on, uh, the first meeting in September, uh, February already. Uh, to move forward with that, that project is moving forward. We've got the, the plans coming forward. We've got that final, final design. Um, so we're very excited about having that. You put the picture up. Uh, that right down here.
Yeah.
Pacing back there.
What happened? I don't know, it's kind of like tasks, it's running a task. Um, so yeah, here's the, this, here's the, uh, the concept, uh, sign we've seen previously. We do have a, um, proposal best, at least we're that we got, we should have our coming soon posters will be up, um, covering that. This is essentially what the final proposal will look like.
It's not gonna have the canvas over it, it's gonna have the.
Yeah, so we went to the canvas, when we saw previously, we had the red canvas lines. So just based on the materials and yeah, you know, structure, make sure those don't dissolve, the, uh, the snow and the sun. Also, the, just the maintenance of it generally, um, we've sort of switched uh, generally to these, uh, the slats you see up there, yeah, the slats on there. Uh, so it'll still be the same sun shades on the, the sun's saying some protection, but a little more sturdy, a little less maintenance, a little less concern about snow gathering on there and thinking pine off during the year. Um, so we've got that sort of a little difference we've seen previously. Um, you also see the, I, this will, this part down here, circling by it, sort of the, uh, the patio area here. This portion here. Uh, showing it's just concrete now. That will be a stamped concrete. So we'll have a stamped concrete, we're being the file, maybe start making the final decisions on that, that portion of it. But that'll be a stamped, uh, stained concrete that will be on there. Uh, we've got, we'll have the, uh, tables, permanent tables here with also some permanent vines, uh, on them as well, these areas here. Um, and then the sort of next part we can sort of talk about is, is that we got this area here, this is the area that's currently, uh, owned by Velvet Robot, um, Nick Summers property there. Um, currently, this is, will be up to them to develop that. As we've been looking through this, you know, the discussion we have tonight here is, you know, do we want to have the village have any sort of part in developing that portion of it? Um, into more of a seating area, public area space, uh, space for seating for the public. We've been approached by the owner of that property, uh, who is willing to work with the village, either to donate the property to us or to work out an easement on the property where we would be essentially granted the right on that property to, to put in place this public space. Um, where we would either, you know, assist in the payments, or we would, or he would grant the whole property to us and we would just own it outright. Um, and sort of make that whole parcel, that whole area, that public open seating area. Um, so I guess that's sort of discussion. We've always, we always know that this is going to be an open space and it's always been part of the plan, but really it's going up to the property owner at this point. If they want to participate, if they, you know, they want that there, how much they want involved with that. Um, effort, you know, fucking things we actually buy, we've showed, showed him the general concept and the sort of file concept design on here. And, you know, it does affect him, um, to have that, but also it affects the village to make that whole area. So the question is, how much first, how much do we want to work with the property owner? How much do we want to actually install across that whole area there versus just the village's property? Um, is there, you know, interest from the board to make that whole area kind of cohesive or?
I would say first blush without any details makes a lot of sense because something where it's going to spend money, develop this, it's gonna it'll look cohesive. So yeah, I think it's great, the better, you know, I think we just have to figure out what's um, usually beneficial for both, but seem like it wants to
Yeah, he's very much. Um, and our thought on this too is we've sort of been brainstorming second quarter by whether it's a donation outright, whether it's, or it's, you know, an easement out there. Whatever we did on that, we would put a permanent sort of a restriction on there that if we're putting money into this, it's not going to be, okay, now he didn't just take it and use it and sell it off or just melt with it. It would be that village public access. Um, we would make sure that, we make sure that it's a public access easement on there where is, you know, all by the public, the village to be able to have, you know, members of public to use that as well as patrons of that property. But.
Seem like it'd be good for the coffee shop as well.
Feel like it'd be cleaner though if we just donated it to us instead of an easement, just because the warranty is very acceptable to it. We don't know what tomorrow will bring. Exactly.
And so, okay.
Just make it all one piece of property that we already had. We all did the towers, it's done, over, it's clean, cut.
We can always make sure it looks the way we want it to.
So the only thing on that is, and it's not a problem, is that it's just a couple extra steps coming to the board for probably a zoning variance. Just because if we're doing it, cause it goes really right up to that property line. And I've got, uh, so um, so this is the property, whoops, where's my hat here? This is the property line. Okay. This is the property line actually, it's going to go straight to the back of the building here, straight across the bat. Right for the boxes. Um. So yeah, so we, so donating that would be donating essentially this area right here to the village, which would be making that back sort of zero setback just with zoning purposes. So, so that building's not permanently sort of encumbered, um, to ever be, you know, in performance with zoning code. We wouldn't want to bring that forward, do a sort of a formal zoning variance on that. So you would still, you would see that coming through that. Uh, if he does donate that, or they do donate that to the village outright, that we would want to see that zero setback requirement. So as long as everybody's okay with that sort of change, um, on the zoning and that, that would allow it to still be used and not be down conforming, so we hear it would be insured, um, you know, in the useful building.
How do they take deliveries? It's, I, I, I doubt the coffee shop has anything super heavy that is or anything like that.
Yeah, there's a
Pretty sure there was one out front the other day.
I'll be upfront, yeah. Well, and there's a side.
The front door, I mean.
And part of that too is me working with him too is, it would be that, that side area here where this, I guess right here, but
They don't learn how.
That's great, that's a, that's part of their property, um, along through there. Where that driveway is on that same side, if you can, sort of where that is there.
Yeah.
That's actually attached to the Mason's building, the next building over. But there is a space on that, that side access there. So that would, they would keep that in that portion.
I just want to see that, that'd be a flipping going across all the nice stamped concrete.
Yeah.
Anything that.
Yeah. So that you know would be to work out as well.
Right.
Um, there would be, had to be some sort of access easement, or maybe it would be to here. We, we would work out the exact details of the distances to do it. But, yeah, cause that's, I mean, this would be their entrance in the back here as well. So that's to be determined and how we work out exactly, which would be a lot of that, but do want to bring it and just sort of have a discussion of, you know, like something, throwing it all and then easement versus actual outright.
What would be going for safety around? That's like the tables, are we putting pillars and stuff around that concrete area?
Air planters that separate, um, with pedestrians from vehicle traffic.
I think deals would be, yeah.
Are they rated for like? If a vehicle. Sima? Like Sima?
Yeah, they'll be like Sima, yep.
Essentially would do the same thing with the pillar, which is not up here, but yeah.
No, that's intended to be here as well. Um, this is sort of, but we give the file, the finalized experience, that would be, that's what I'm here as well.
They're gonna give, I, I, they're gonna give it to us.
Well, what we had asked, um, David Sydney to do is to put together the bid package, two parts to it. Uh, what would be just our property and then if based on what you decided tonight, expanding to the other side. So that on the twenty seventh, if everything comes together, um, the idea is to have a short meeting at five thirty where you look at the bid package and hopefully vote for the bid package and then you can send it out for bid. So is there then direction? And Nick Summer was very cooperative. He said he would do whatever his, that he decided he wanted. Whether he wanted the easement or whether he wanted him to donate it. He will be happy to do because he recognizes the value and not just that, how important this is to the entire community. So he wants to be part of this. So therefore, we hear you correctly, but to have a cohesive, to go for the entire area and to work out that what will be the granting of the property as opposed, the donation of the property as opposed to easement. And that the bid package to include that whole space.
Yeah, just.
And look at it then next Tuesday, the twenty seventh. The reason for that is if we can get it out, then the timing was the bid package goes out two or three weeks later, we can actually give this warning start to by October.
Are we putting, I, I had suggested this to David, I don't know if we're putting like sort of downtown parking last time.
Yeah.
Yes.
With it, you just had it.
Yeah, there's not, there's not there yet. You will see access at that meeting next week. So we, we've got sort of a book, book he's been putting together, just general ideas, concepts, colors, based on I believe the meeting you guys had previously, um, the last, I would say that one, but the one you guys had, there were some, you know, general looks, things you like, you know, box colors, sign styles. So there's a more refined version of that. So he is, he is working on, he is working on sort of signage for the whole downtown area, including this, but the general downtown.
Yeah, just feel like, yeah, give it a nice little brand.
Yep. And so that will be, you'll see another version of that, uh, that look book, the mood, the mood book, I believe he calls it. Uh, you'll see that at the next, uh, at the next meeting.
Are we talking to the other building owner too, or keeping them in the loop of what's going on?
No, I'm setting up a, a meeting with them. They've seen the, uh, initial plans on that. They've seen the fact that this is going to be access here. We're asking for access on this. Um, now that we actually have this concept plan, we'll also have a meeting with them to actually show them sort of the more recent final version of it, but they have, uh, had, they have some that. Um, really their biggest concern was just not having to maintain property. Um, if this walkway bit, essentially this walkway really in the back way, this is not in the village's property, this back, this rear block area. Um, now I haven't maintained that. They don't want to add, maintain extra, uh, property. They would already have to maintain, so. Uh, that was really their.
Also, a couple of details to work out, once they, um, sorry, the owners of the building, it's garbage and that their air conditioner is not a village property. So you have to clean up some. Stuff back there.
Can we rethink that building? Are we gonna get the documents Friday then, for this meeting?
Yeah.
Just asking, cause I won't be out May Tuesday, so if they could at least.
Tuesday the twenty seventh.
To me.
So we hope we get those now. Yeah, I like hearing that. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it would have to, yes, it would have to be because we posted.
Right.
And also probably could be great for the sun next door. Make sure you get this out. Also, those, it's a coming attraction. For, I think posters you said.
So that coming attraction sign will be a full bio fortified sign that will go at the part five.
So, um, this are going to be signs like for diesel, for things we can add for, you know, I think that having that when we walk in here, having it at for about.
Particularly, I think for those, yeah, for the hottest run as well.
Yeah, I think both, you know.
Yep, yep. Yeah, if it was on poster board.
Sounds good. Like one can underhold this.
Who is this? So she's got a, uh, yes, just.
Seeing like White House is down, is that completely done?
Livery.
Livery House, yes.
Heard about it. King Minnesota.
Do a hole there.
It'll be, yeah, still, they're going to, they're going to finish the, I don't trust yourself, but they're going to finish the restoration this week on that.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we'll talk about that during budget time with what next steps for that right there, whether we're trying to find somebody purchasing it or whatever.
And really think we'll bring this up at these meetings too.
Yeah, I think we, Carol had mine, we put a bug.
Yeah, sell a franchise to a bug cave store.
Oh, I think the right idea is to find some sort of Mr. Herbl.
Yes, developer of it.
Some sort of developer of her business.
Any other old business?
Oh wait, we can bang out from the rest of the new business stuff.
The oldest get that?
New business.
Not serious.
No, we're selling our old business, yeah. I was just gonna say more old business things. Uh, moving on to item number four. New business. Oh, item number four is special recommendation, uh, approval of conference and travel expenses for chief folly while attending the unit chiefs of lease orientation, um, for being able to be uh, state law, we have to do these travel expenses, conference expenses, unfortunately budgeted into our uh, budgets every year and the trainings, but the actual travel expenses, you are required to have a board vote on that type of, uh, those things. So that's why this is here. And if you want to mention anything about it, uh.
No, so I mean, this is required, uh, to attend those for any chief, um, within two years by the training, Illinois Training Standards Board. Um, I mean, everything's in East Peoria. You have to have it within two years and they're like, well, just once a year. And actually they take pre-registration because the class fills up before registration opens. So they ask you how long you've been achieved for. If you're coming up either in two years, then okay, you have a spot. So I'm kind of becoming up next year and two years, so this is last one for, um, they actually, the classes paid, lodges paid for, you know, across the village, this is something just sort of being, um, per view and, uh, thirty dollars, uh, they have working bunches, so. So, so, uh, it's just kind of practice.
Questions? Back and forth, I noticed you didn't have a hotel.
No, that's actually included. They pay for the hotel to get all your lodging, everything is, yeah, that's all paid for, so. Yeah, those are simply.
Where do you actually have a hotel?
Yeah, it's a conference, I mean, tell that to, I don't even have to leave.
Motion to send it to the board, second.
Alright, uh, roll call.
Patty.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Sima. Locke.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Malco.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, item number four, or sorry, item number five is discussion recommendation in the war for approval of travel expenses for electric officials and staff attendance the twenty twenty four IML conference, September nineteenth through twenty eighth. Uh, estimated expenses are fourteen hundred dollars per attendee. She actually has not changed that much the last three or four years, which is interesting. Um, right now, I believe it's only me who's going to this. I don't know if anybody other trustees are interested in going there. I know we've had some discussions. Um, we're at many now, so we are, you know, we do want somebody else to go. Let us know now, I suppose, then we'll or I guess in between now and next board meeting, um, if anyone else is going to go to this. I think it's useful once or twice, I, I've been for a couple of years, but I think it's good every couple of years to go to it, using the updates, see what's other places are doing, it's been networking. I've been selling the IML conference, but it is a good, I think occasionally, maybe not every year, but, uh, it's, it's good to, to go and sort of see what things are happening with. So, um, questions? Again, if anyone wants to go.
Where is it?
This is it. Um, so I guess right now it's just for, I, for me going to this, um, but if any of the trustees want to go, let me know. We'll put that on the agenda for the final board. There's other discussions, a motion to.
Second.
Board, thank you. Um, I have a roll call.
Wright.
Yes.
Sima.
Yes.
Locke.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Malco.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
My number six, thank you. Uh, my number six is discussion recommendation of a special event permit for the state line disc golf association. Uh, and art of bounds to stall, over the art of bounds to stall tournament, held at Porter Park on November second, two thousand twenty four. Um, as you've seen, who has few meetings really, last couple of months here, we kind of lack of disc golf events. Um, that park is being very well used for tournaments, uh, and I also everyday play as well. Um, so this is just another, another one of those. Um, we are actually disturbing those here too. Um, the village is, we're working out, putting together a permit form and a permit application for just these tournaments. We have so many of them. Sort of streamlined version of, it is roughly the same every time. Um, numbers change a little bit and the applicants change a little bit, but so we're bringing a streamlined version of that for these special events coming through, uh, for these, for these tournaments that take place there. Uh, this is the Halloween doubles to call tournaments. Um, they, this is a larger one, a little bit larger than we've had in some of the prior ones, like doubles tournaments, projected attendance is a hundred, a hundred and fifty. Um, they have also requested to use the cabin, rent the cabin as part of their special events. I think that was the question, I think that, yeah, Tristan Patty brought up before, are they going to be renting the cabin? Um, their request is to use the cabin. That's also part of discussion. Um, I think for this one, you know, we recommend, you know, proving it using the cabin, uh, as any other not-for-profit organization. However, as we start figuring out these number of tournaments we have, that will be part of our discussion is, do we always want to have, you know, these full events use the cabin? Um, they're not for profit and to their charitable organization. So under our current policy, we don't charge for that. Um, it's a lot of people using that cabin for these events. So something I think about, we'll bring that to the board and have a little more discussion about that, I think in the next few weeks, uh, or next, excuse me, yes, next few meetings. Um, about what we want to do, what we're going to see for these, uh, that there, maybe it's for it's just how we use these events, how these tournaments run. Uh, otherwise we've got a lot of use through there for these.
Do you know what they primarily use the cabin for?
I, for, usually they don't request the cabins. This one they have, I think to the side, I think for the restrooms, roughly, and then also a warming area, I think, but.
Pretty good to Halloween party.
Maybe.
They're charging what? Ignition.
I just wonder when we build up the other side, if we put a good bathroom.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe that would reduce their want of the cabin.
And I think also, and we're gonna be, we're, we're meeting again, but I think also because it's November, I think it's something about the warming station as well, and I think that's also an issue too. Um, the cabin capacity is sixty, I think roughly sixty, um, and we're gonna have a hundred people, so they're all gonna be in there. But again, it's something to consider as we go through this. So we're working through a sort of a different procedure for these to sculpt tournaments, stop it, go a little more quickly, then also have a little more of a say in covering these.
Can it just golf all year round or is it?
It is, it is.
So they get played in the winter, they get played. Yeah, right.
And so it does, the use goes down during the winter, but yeah, absolutely, they're out there all year long. They're out there blowing and shoveling off the pads and they're, they're playing out there.
I, 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 you know, I think we should support the disc golf and I think that it's a great thing with the gathering and absolutely. But I do think that we need to have some type of accountability to, like, when they're gonna want the cabin or not. And I think we'll keep in the cabin every month, you know, or every week or whatever it is, but, um, but I think that if we had to work with them, we had like maybe their main staple, that's where they want to use it ahead of time. Maybe a couple of years, whatever, that would, that would be good. We've got it in advance, maybe what they, what their plan was.
And with each of this one too, you go down the seventh board too. So this has, this is a sort of annual event they have, this, this tournament is doubles to scout tournament.
Yeah.
It has been at H Park in the past, I think, four or five years, it's been at H Park, which is about the big. Type of space for just golf in the area, and so now we're starting to get those events moved from there up here as well, so.
It's great.
It's very great, it's absolutely great, yeah, and we've got a really good, Troy's got a great relationship with them, we, they've been with them, we've been working with them um. All the time, actually, they come through and they have their requests, and we've got some, some of the requests we're gonna try to fulfill, uh coming up very shortly here, some additional tables and different additional parts of the uh. The park uh is part of the Ozley Grant actually, but we're sort of doing it ahead of time on that. So yeah, we've got really good, really good event place, a really good course that we have in the village. Um and they're part of it as well, so we're, we're part of it, but they also are very proud of the entire back course.
Seems to be. On to a need for this essentially. Just throwing an idea out, but looking at Riverside, that might be an idea. There's an additional force there if they're.
For planting trees now you're saying?
Well, plant trees, I mean, we could even rotate the grounds, you know, often build it as golf course with landscaping and all that operation, right? Can't put a ton out there for the side park, but if a disc golf. I don't know if they're called a net or whether it falls over, I assume it's not very much like that. No, they're still old or. Or you know, if they like tills or whatever from a blood panel.
It's turned over now. We could take them out if we need, so.
Yeah, did you, the, the sort of permanent part, the pads, so they have those pads.
By yourself, so.
The, yeah, the baskets can be, and they actually have a portable one, it's a moving one, they have actually at Portart now, next to a triangle. Uh pyramid they got.
That is a good idea.
That's, that's.
Yeah. Um so with that, if there's any more questions, we feel very glad.
And we are gonna have something for next uh public comment or notification to those people for next Tuesday.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we post, we've been posting, we'll always post on uh, maybe next door.
Could you send a mailer? Do you send a mailer to the people so close to that property or?
Hey, for which? Over the Hedges Run.
Something that.
Keeps them in the loop.
Yes.
Yeah.
We, we post our next door, I mean, it's something, and that, we've had, we've, we have. So they, I, I gotta note that, like the Hedges Run and that group, they get the message, they get those, those notifications, cause they have been very active coming to those meetings we have, providing meetings. We've had feedback from them as well, and we've adjusted our plans based on their feedback too, um I am sure David will go over it at the. Meeting next week, but um we have taken their considerations, including, well, he'll go overall of them, but.
I know we have too, like.
Yeah.
Trying, might say, making sure everyone is involved and their relatives actually have that.
Could advise those people coming to the meeting, uh so to your contact information.
Me too, yeah, we will, yeah, there are, the people that should sign up will be on that list, like also I think next door has been great for that, because they sort of are aware of it, they sort of watch those.
Stores definitely.
Um I guess with, back to the disc golf, if we have a motion to send that to the board first.
I'm out, yes, sorry.
Uh have a roll call.
Babcock.
Yes.
Simon.
Yes.
Block.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Malaco.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um next item is public comment, do we have any, any wishes to? Speaker comments, I need a, I can say or anything in general. Um no presentations for tonight. Uh no kind of possessions needed, going back, I would entertain a motion to. So.
Sorry.
Uh roll call.
Block.
Yes.
Simon.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Malaco.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
We're turning at seven forty three.